So, um. Okay, Julie Johnson, who voiced for our offices at seventeen seventy-four North Miami in Baton Rouge. Um, we, we promised that we'd be back to evaluate the new process that we've taken and the steps that we took to, um, to increase the customer service and the complaint process. And so we did, y'all asked us to get some, to get some numbers and pull that. Um, in December and January, they were twenty-five and thirty, um, each month. I mean, one, one twenty-five and one month and thirty in the other month. And, um, that's total that we, that we received out of, in, in this industry, it's called touches. Because that means every, every unit that we touch, that, that's a touch and that we don't. So there's been, in the month of December and in the month of January, forty-two thousand two hundred and eighteen.
You're good.
Oh, okay. That's all right. So each month, each month in each police unit, we touch, we make forty-two thousand two hundred and eighteen touches. And so for the month of December, we had twenty-five, but actually thirty, because, um, five of them got called in on the first day in January, but it was about December. So there were thirty for December and twenty-five for January, um, complaints total that were, um, that were called to us and were resolved within the twenty-four hour period. I think that it's working. I think that Jessica coming here, um, every day, and she's just going public for us every, every day, and talking it over with, with Kelsey and discussing anything that might come up or anything that they see. Or, um, I know that we've been helping as well with, and Frosty's been a great help, um, with any kind of road conditions and mines and stuff like that. So I think that, um, the communication has increased greatly, and I think that's a positive thing, and I think y'all are seeing that. Um, and if anybody else has any questions for us or wants to know anything else.
Did, did y'all figure out the issue with Matthew Paul?
He's writing the reports and will have those.
I'll, I'll send them to you.
It's the same people, like, if it's the same people, it's not that would be a problem, but the same people are calling me over and they're not.
Absolutely. Well, well, certainly, and those are ones that are on our radar right now, but I'll have a report for you.
If you missed it and y'all send it back to get it, it would kind of, so I should pick this up next time.
Exactly.
But they don't.
Yes, and they have to do a better job of communicating with us as well.
I don't want the supervisor to not say, hey, stop, there's a garbage you didn't pick up. You know, something, there's a communication break down somewhere.
Absolutely.
So whatever y'all did, I think is working. And I had one or two complaints, but they were again after the snow, and they were, uh, actually resolved the next day. So, but, uh, the remainder of the time, I had no complaints, so I haven't had any, I mean, so.
And, and these are efforts that we will continue to do. And, and just to let you know, we did, we do check all these. There were a couple that, to be honest with you, they weren't helping when we went through, uh, but we didn't bother to check on that. We just got them taken care of anyway. We'll start communicating that information to you guys, so you can see that as well. But right now, we just wanted to kind of do a better job of keeping everybody happy.
For sure, the ones that are complaining to me, their partners and athletes, send me that email.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I, I know one of the ones that called in after the snow, and we had to skip it because of the parade. So, but we got it taken care of the next day.
Yep.
Sorry.
Thank y'all.
Thank you guys.
We appreciate it.
Okay, take action in it, there are ways for it, if you got it, so that I can keep you comfortable.
No action.
No action.
Discuss, take action, resolution for the use of C-Way, F-21, 22, 24, in conjunction with UDA, fifty-eight, rest of the. Can you take it out? Twenty-five, give them anything, please.
Howie Rashawn, Water Works, Devon, also Sam Brown. Uh, this is what we brought to you last, last week, and we're back.
I did not, there was a meeting that Caitlin and David did have with Water Works. And I believe, what we could feel, and I believe that everything, David said, everything is fine. Am I correct, Caitlin?
Yeah, he said it should be good to sign, the resolution is in y'all's packet. Um, I think they just wanted to make some amendments and to make sure that it was okay to use that grant in conjunction.
I think that our engineers supplied all the letters for the various, uh, L-GAP and C-WIP and USDA residential.
Yeah, the engineers sent, sent the templates to me and I put it on letterhead.
And I am correct that going forward, all invoices will be submitted to the.
Yeah, moving forward, that we would prefer all invoices to be sent here for us, for it to be paid out here.
That's right.
Motion, second.
Ah. Thank you.
You have to take extra resolution on use of C-Way, F-21, 22, 24, in conjunction with USDA.
One, 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 three.
I'd like to make that motion.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, that's here. That's the amendment you all approved for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, they're just asking. You all approve it right there, asking for an amendment, just so they, the same thing, pretty much, they just have to do an amendment to it?
That's.
And the others.
That's correct. So the, the state wants us to, uh, you know, basically approve the way back when we applied for it. Of course, to apply for it for a certain item. And just like we came here before, it has to move it from, for a generator from one wheel to another. They just need to have a paper trail that says, you know, in their documentation, that we're moving it from one request to another. And in this case, we're using, we're putting all that money into our much larger grant. So there's, there's several, there's several of those C-WIP, L-GAP grants that were already approved by the jury. We're just stating the purpose is a little different than what we originally applied for. Just like we applied for a grant, we couldn't spend all the money we had to redesignate it to something else. We can't just go spend it on something else. So that's, that's what all those individual things are for.
What's question? Question, you got a favor?
Ah.
You got a problem? Okay, do you, just, discuss, take action, very quick, deliver, count us.
And then one more.
Never.
We both know that now.
Yes, I'll say.
Quick, you know, you're on the favor.
Ah.
Okay, do you, just take action, very quick, deliver, count us. Definitely, that was probably not sixty-one, like eight open.
Yes, sir. I'm requesting delivery, Cameron, on one parking at six thousand seven, Highway sixty-one.
I know, my problem is, uh, Mr. Williams is the one that's addressed that issue, because we just got to do the.
Yeah, just have to make sure that the, uh, the hole is up good.
Motion, second.
And, and how many?
Hundred, yeah, hundred.
No, four.
How, how, how much? I have to tell you.
Uh, they told me a year.
Yeah, yeah. We're giving one year, but I need to extend to. Just call back.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion for one year. I said, I said.
Everything has to be done up to where we're going.
Yeah. Make sure, you got a favor?
Ah.
You got a phone? Discuss, go through, still, probably, fifty-five, thirty, highway, no, Donald Trump. Sixty-five? What you taking?
We're just taking them off in the next. Uh, take it to, uh, I'll make a motion to table, Mr. Donald's concern, uh, to the Mexican account.
On the favor? You got a phone? The question is, if there are community centers on forty-four, in a city that keeps, in a community center.
Okay. Everybody late, just say hi. I'm on my stage tonight. Okay, I just wrote, we got works, Rachel King and Bob, beginning just a minute.
Okay, we're coming, we're coming.
We'll do that.
Let's only discuss, we're going in the property of seventy-two, A-O-four, highway nine fifty. Take your energy.
Captain Williams, uh, build official. Uh, what we have is a piece of property on Leonardstown Road. Okay, there's a little bit of confusion with it, I just need some clarity on y'all's part. Okay? We advertised the property as C-one, obviously I posted the signs. Um, and the planning was only minutes, it was approved to rezone from A-two to C-two. Okay? And the police jury minutes, it states that they approved it from residential to commercial. So there was no specifics that they defined. So what I need y'all to do is we either need to rescind that motion and let's figure it out.
But what's, what's on the sheet for, for this?
Well, it was advertised as C-one, so talking to Sam, that's what it should be.
Right.
But, and the plan's only minutes, it was A-two to C-two.
But the plan is, it's only came, that they came over with police jury.
I understand that.
But we better be cool.
Normally, the police jury would just accept the recommendation from the plan, okay? But in this particular case, the net estate, residential to commercial, there's no specifics. Any specifics.
They're thinking of that, we need to specific, I would say, because you're saying things, you're definitely.
C-one.
With, with country, that's we, this is there, and other there, about what we're calling, never trust it. And so, once we're calling it now, right?
Yes.
But we have a lot to do, because we need to get. Yeah, definitely, could get it done.
So what's happening with the part?
They just care about that, all that.
There's a lot of, yes.
Too much, from, from, really, they just took it.
This has been brought before and before, uh, from my, certainly, currently that we had.
Then don't go back, you do, C-two, so that.
But you can't just say residential to commercial. You need to be solicitors. Now, obviously, I can, talking to Sam, whatever you advertise it, that's what needs to be listed. Um, but I, I, I just, I need some clarification from y'all, because obviously, of course.
Advertised as C-one.
Correct.
And it's not be C-one?
So, just, just, why, we tried to go to the motion, is it, is that possible? Is that C-one? Yeah.
They wanted to do a C-two, huh?
Science said C-one.
But.
The activity, the recently, the activity that they want to do would be, the C-two would be a fire. Yes.
But you, you first thing was, you can't, you can't still, took it on C-one.
They can't say what?
You said.
Where we gonna go? If they want to go C-two, then we need to react. Because if we advertise it as C-one, it's not going to work on C-one. C-one is not what they seek, and they seek in C-two. So it's going to have to react to.
We could cheat them. Um, I think I was the one who said, well, I was the one that said, Mr. Jeff out. I had to redo it because initially, Mr. Kelly came in, he had his home address, and I think it was just a misunderstanding with the paperwork, but it was C-one or C-two, but actually, it was C-two. But I did write on the plaque, C-one, because I had to change the address. Because it was for Stu Jack at first, and then I had to go back and put the correct address.
Correct.
Yeah.
But, but we, we just need to react.
She said they're trying to C-two, who isn't.
They just, it's like, oh, all right.
There was advertised as C-one or C-two?
It was advertised as C-one.
So it needs to be advertised as C-two.
Right. I think the motion that we advertised it as C-two, we advertised.
I don't want to be a disruption, but it was only, only intended to discuss.
Yeah.
So the only thing, you know, maybe dealing with lawsuits or something, so y'all mind if you maybe can add to the agenda to make action to it?
Okay.
And make a motion, because only if it says, because.
I make the motion that we add it to the next meeting, add it to the next meeting.
Next, yeah.
Yeah, next. I said, I said.
You know, if I, Mr. Kelly. Have time to feel better and get fit, and I want work to put that down.
Second. Ah.
Approved twenty-four, five, liquor license, long term.
That's in my district. And, um. I need to bring this to your attention. They just got their license for twenty-four, in December. They advertised. They went to David because they're now getting their license for twenty-four. And they did not advertise. But I'd like to ask if we can just, I mean, we're talking like week, two weeks, years, in this. We're not talking about one week. Oh, I don't know.
Twenty-four gave a license for one, for, for nearly twenty-four.
Right.
Twenty-five for twenty-four.
So they did do the, um, application, they paid the fee, and it was notarized, they just didn't do the advertising. So they were supposed to do the advertising?
Yes.
Well, the advertising itself, yeah. That's supposed to be done. And they did, they did just do an advertising, but the advertising, I'm sure they said twenty-twenty-four, the license, and twenty-twenty-five.
They hold advertisers to possess the gift, so they already got it, so the long, I don't think they need to advertise again, that's a little.
Well, I think they, according to your order, they need to advertise, but I mean.
Your best time to renew it, get, get renewed?
No, I, I mean, I, I never.
We already got a renewal, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
Well, whenever it is, I'd like to make a motion that we approve it.
We do.
Second.
We do.
Renewal.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, really. Discuss, question, you got a favor?
Ah.
You got a phone?
I'd like to say one thing. It's like that situation right there, when you, a small business, and you go and invite that bully to November, because you got to pay here, you got to pay, maybe you pay several different places, and then you turn around and do it all over again.
Well, it was brought to my attention today, and I just felt it was better that we knew it and we made a decision on it.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, like, just a renewal.
Number ten, request for this, we have a new center, there was a, forty-year side, and it's fixed with upkeep of the community center. Okay, how you doing, Doc? I'm thinking, okay, I'm just kidding, come to a sixteen. More so, you know, like, we're here tonight, before we go beyond that, we got a board here, we got a dairy, one of them, I give one, one of them, brother. But I, we here tonight because our upstairs, to get us to the farm, for our community center, she out there playing the stall. And the magneto, when we come tonight, find out, we still have, we go on land, that these belong to the Polish jury. When we have a board, so I'm going to use, we'll be over. And, uh, but you want, it's okay to see, it's okay to put it on there, and that's what I said, we're trying. We want to know, it'll be okay. And then, the other thing is, if it belongs to the Polish jurors on the land, so you all, then we you all keep it up. That's our question. Okay, but we don't have, we don't have a shelf. Right. Don't shift, we have a shelf, and that's because most times the church. Right. And excuse me, because it's not only for magneto. It's for paintwork. We don't think, the president said, we don't have one of that, and if people want to have it, get it to a pick and sack and all that, and he said, I don't have it.
Well, I, I have some questions.
Yes.
What, how, how big of a center are you talking about? How big of an area?
I think it's a big, I think it's aided by, what we talking about, aided by six, and then aided by four, the stadium.
Y'all have, uh, any certain plans or anything?
We don't, yeah.
I'd like to see.
We gonna get plans, we gonna do, we don't need to do too much nothing till we get approved, we all that.
Would you probably, okay, about this many aside, probably?
Yeah, exactly, you know, and y'all that back there, that's what we want, to like.
I think, I think it's a good thing that y'all trying, and we definitely need a shelter, because there's some that's came up several times, and, um, I'll, I'll make the motion that we, uh, let general vision go on with it, but that you, pending that you get the documentation back to us with the size, the specs, and all that. We need all this, but the idea of what y'all trying to do is a good thing.
It's a great thing. With the, with the.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Sam, I said, I agree.
Interesting.
Okay, the same. And what we need to do is just some legal work on that, you know, maybe cooperate and never, hold firm, or something like that. Because what they're talking about building is a structure, and you're probably, so when you build a structure and you're probably, they need to be protected to know that they're going to be able to maintain it, I mean, uh, to use it, if y'all maintain it, kind of set out everything like that. If we can get something drawn up, I, I know the profit is, well, where it's at, I don't know what, I don't know how much property y'all own right there. I think they have the park, and they have the fire station, we can get something drawn up. We can do that as well.
And one other thing, Mr. King, we, we, it's just kind of touch on how you would be planning, planning to get the fund in, so everybody.
Get the fund?
Yes.
Yeah, we, that, that, we gonna pay the money, but we not acting. No, our state representative, he gonna try to appropriate some money to be a real, I'm not saying it gonna happen.
Question would be too, how is that would be, I guess, what, it's a word I would use, you know, separate term, how to flow the money, would, would make it from where it needs to come.
What will, for the year, for the. Well. Let them, for the year, for the. One, one, we try, five thousand, I'm a farmer, I want to get your clearance, and then, probably, for that, for, yes. If I, we, I'm a farmer, simply on the board, you know what I'm saying? And we decide this, that, moves to that area. For the year, I'd like to put a corporation, given to the jury, not to the Polish jury.
Right.
Yeah. So I look, uh, we gonna, we gonna expect and everything, when you gonna call, and, uh, if, if they were paying, you know, they put it, what he said.
So, so that's a good question, so, and I just want to.
But I don't want, excuse me.
Yes.
We don't want, we do all this year, we going up and trying to get, and then, we get the money approved, and then the Polish jury won't take it and do what they want.
So, so that's gonna be my question.
I don't want that.
So it's not honoring through, but we just don't need the fire department to clean out this item?
No, I don't want.
Okay. That's a good question, so.
Put it in yellow.
Yes, I got you, but.
But we gonna, if I want to shoot it off, we gonna be straight.
You probably have some type of, what I want to say, a certified entity, or your business has to be listed with the, with the state or whatever. Just, just say, for example, here, I'm just using my, my kind of point, and say, we gotta get money, but we get the money, but it's like, oh, you guys are not a LLC, or, or not having a business, some type of business thing here, so if you can't get the money, then all of a sudden, what you don't want to happen, is going to happen, it's going to come through the Polish jury.
Well, we just want to get all this, twenty-one, what's one, hey. No, we're not sharing, because.
So, Mr. King, this is the thing, this is.
Paperwork and leave, and the family got us.
That need break, because like I said, we'd love to have that, but I don't want you to run into a legal thing, I mean, like, oops, you know what? That money is coming to the Polish.
It's going to.
Because we just have.
We gonna get straight, we get, we gonna get straight, we gonna do that.
Okay, because y'all might consider some kind of business entity, to make sure y'all get their money, because if you don't, it's going to slip, please, it's going to be, it's going to land on you.
We doing that much, I appreciate what you all done, but, uh, we run this, we said, we're coming, but we know we going.
I'm helping to get incorporated.
Yeah.
I'm helping, uh, go to Secretary of State's office to get all that set up, and once it's all set up. Basically, what they're asking is that, they just want to be sure, before we go through all of this, that the jury is willing to allow them to put that center on that property. Since y'all, they've gotten y'all blessings, now, we'll move forward to taking care of it by once C-three, yeah.
That's right.
Uh, then.
We gonna get straight.
Look, the jury have insurance on this building? If something would happen there, somebody get hurt, with, if.
Oh, so, he just fight our rest of the fall, because if it's on here. Yeah. Because if it belongs to you, it'll be on your property.
So this goes back to kind of like, um, what we talked about with Water Works, Capitol Avenue, and the sign before. The police jury is responsible, so whenever it comes time to, if I'm correct, um, Mr. Deprive, whenever it comes time to do everything, which is the police jury is going to have to be the one to pay these invoices, the police jury is going to have to be the one to make sure these contractors are able to do contract work, they have everything that they need to have, they would all have to go with police jury, not the whole.
No, come for them.
No.
That's hot.
Because if you don't do it that way, you're going to have to pay that money.
That's the way it's going to be. We're gonna do it the right way, so everybody will have to come to the here. That makes sense. You guys want, I mean, it's great, but.
Yeah.
So y'all understand, like. Start from here and trickle down, and it to you guys, but you.
No, you don't, when you get the money, that was on the side, it's all right.
Long term, who pays for the electricity, water?
It'll be.
Will be paying for all of that.
Yeah, I feel. Shouldn't be that much.
So I guess it's in a bill that, I'm the president, the water, so I won't cut you off, you don't pay.
That's what I, I wanted to say, to kind of piggyback on what you just said, and Mr. Olmstead and I already spoke, um, I want to clarify, when we get a little bit further down the road in this process, what is the expectation, it says up to, on our agenda tonight? So we need to get, uh, exactly what is being asked of us.
So we need to get, uh, exactly what is being asked of us, and utilities, and maintenance, and all that, so we wanna clarify that.
All that should come with the specs when they bring the plan in.
Yes, they study...
I wanna say that too, so we can...
But you, you have, the, the legal happen tomorrow.
And the team only appropriate...
Yeah, get the corporation, like I did, they have plans for corporation, yeah. Well, one thing I check, make the corner cure, it's about that, we get them given, not ours.
So, so we're clear, we're talking about a building that's gonna be put, um, police jury property, that another committee is gonna be in charge of?
No, they don't have to go through here, it's gonna come through here.
Look, we have a devil wish, it could be a jury project.
And we're responsible for the other people to manage.
We will play if somebody's steward. If somebody will, if somebody will use the building, that's what the commission will come back up.
Well, see, that's, that's the thing, I mean, to Mr. King, I think, uh, the problem, if, uh, the Polish jury is gonna have to, you know, if somebody wanna use it, you'll have to call over here, and then get back to you guys, or whoever's over there, who will make a point, at, at the time, like, so I'm sitting here, as your representative in that district, it can be, you know, the next four or five years, representing lady, representing man, but that will have to follow somebody calling, saying, look, you gotta call the Polish jury officers here, we can use that building, and then, hey, go represent it at that time, if I'm not mistaken, this, this guy's representative, so call him, and y'all are gonna look at the building series, they're gonna use it. But I think everything, it's gonna have to follow through the Polish jury.
I know the police jury got everything.
Everybody, they called us, and we'll get in contact with y'all, and if you know that this place, you know to use it...
It just has to be...
That's right. If we gonna be a board...
To be a shelter, understand, bathrooms have to be a certain way, uh, there's a lot involved with that. If people stay there, you got, I'd be wrong, but security, all kinds of different things have to come into play, when you start talking about a shelter, you know, a place for people to go, and, and water probably is what I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah.
It takes a whole lot.
And we have a cooperative agreement with the car, on a piece of property, and we don't pay anything towards it.
Thanks, Al, but I'm confused, you're gonna, you're gonna take care of their maintenance, their utilities, and their insurance? But the library's yours, and you don't do that for the library, why would you do it for them and not for us?
Not for her, to, to, to put that...
Oh, that's, that's okay, their insurance and everything, gotcha. I didn't wanna get less down. Take care of myself.
Derek, you are Homeland Security, I, I wanna give, Mr. King, I kinda get with them and work on these, if we gonna use it for a shelter, that, just like you were telling, there's all kind of rules that the state implements, FEMA rep, uh, has, how many bathrooms you gotta have, secure areas, and who can be in there?
That's right.
Because if it's gonna be a shelter open to everybody, you gotta look at all the legal aspects of who's in there, what they're classified as, you can't have them in a certain area, you have to have a spot different form. So, we got a whole bunch of stuff that's required, it must last if you gonna be able to cook in there. And that throws a whole different...
Well, we gonna want you at our next meeting.
Oh, yes. So he knows he got it. All right.
Can I say, let's try, to look for a way to move this forward, to push it back. The shell, we're gonna law say more, and, uh, what you were trying to do is a great thing, I think what they're actually saying, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, they're creating, oh, we gonna do a corporate endeavor, and I think once we do the corporate endeavor, they can actually manage what they do.
And that's pretty, we're not gonna be able to manage the, the, the decision of whatever's...
Exactly, when it comes to a shelf, that's a different thing. Their basic operation, they're gonna have...
I got one last thing, I'm not trying to really get into that running thing, but it's grants out there, uh, to try to get their day operations, uh, for the center, the visitor, it's fees that people can use, if they wanna have it working for them, it's some of the things, it's just, uh, the starter, just to coming out to see if it's possible to use the property. When they come back the next time, it's gonna, it, it'd be a lot of details, the way they can really sit down and give y'all a clear view of what's the mission of this facility is gonna be, what they're gonna try to do, so it's just...
Get this person to probably figure that, just going, um, I'm gonna make a motion, move all, depending on their plans, everything, if you want, team to come over with you. And I'll give an opportunity, I'll make the motion, and it's true.
Thank you, sir. Anybody discuss, Quayle Lord, you sit on the table?
Ah, thank you, sir.
Just not take that to expect you for the monitor, you can, you can, six million return, uh, seventy, Mr. Williams? You have to press change.
Opera night. Um, temp away and benefit official, our current award touring is up in two days. I obviously get calls daily on, can I do this, can I do this? So, I believe y'all have a meeting this week?
We had a meeting last, we had a meeting last week, and, uh, in that meeting, uh, we made a couple changes to what we had talked about in the meeting a month ago, two months ago. Uh, just a couple changes coming in, uh, J.R.'s working on some, uh, correct, all right, what?
Formatting errors.
Formatting, right now, so we should have something ready for you on the next meeting, to be able to present, to move forward on y'all's side.
How long is the meeting?
What do you need to extend it, nine to eight?
Two months, two, three, three months?
What?
Did you make...
John Rushton, if you extend it till the end of March, that will give you the next meeting, a set public hearing, to get your input, which will be second meeting in March. That way, they can make this, the surveyors can make the deadline with the new ordinance for the first meeting in April, so April will be back on track. So if you make it till the end of March, basically, no, make it till thirty-first of March.
So long?
March, yeah, whatever, it's on the fifth of February now, so, yeah. But if you do that, you'll be good.
I thought too much, Tim.
I make a question.
My second.
My whole thing here, you expect, Quayle Lord, you know, the thing?
Uh...
And give you time, we just have to get you, get everything, so y'all want to brush things clean, and...
Everything, everything's pretty much ready for what, uh, everything's pretty much ready for what our committee did, but, uh, like I said, it's just some format items that wasn't prepared. Our meeting being only last week, and this week, it's taking a little more, what it means.
Yes.
And I would like to say, uh, is that, uh, you know, nobody, who can have a job, it's gonna have people, like them, that don't like them. But I would just like to ask the jury and the people out here, that, since I've been here, I see war done, and eight months, I hate to bring this leaving, but they mind if he's gone, I'd say that, thank you.
I can have the, after charging me to pay it, if you think that, if you wanna add, take a little pay. There is gonna be a time, of course, I didn't know it was gonna be, and, um... Who always, you want to, that pay. Can we have a deadline?
That's what I was gonna say before we voted, I was trying to mention that we need to adjust some of those details.
We did, I would take that care.
I, I thought it'd be a thirty day, um, let's say, tomorrow, tomorrow, because we can have everything in place, could we, this airs, for tomorrow, thirty days?
First time, if I, if you all approve it like that, it won't, won't run until today.
It's, it's a...
It's around twelve. It'll be first one.
Then you get a month back for that.
A quarter month, yeah. I thought I need a quarter month. Yeah, I thought, yeah, quarter month, twelve, all the way to March.
When is thirteen? Well, can we do that Thursday?
Thursday. The Thursday.
Yeah.
That'd be March thirteen.
March thirteen.
March thirteen.
Yes, sir, I'd like to have the motion approved, my opinion, what's this?
Second.
Uh, there's a finance committee tomorrow at four P.M. here.
Derek, you with Homeland Security, just a couple things right now. They had a rumor going about on the sixth, we were gonna have a bad storm and all coming through. National Weather Service put a email out, telling people, don't listen to people that aren't meteorologists. But we have something that's gonna be coming, we don't know how far it's coming down, about the sixteenth through seventeenth, maybe up to the eighteenth, we got another one coming. They don't know how far, right now, long range, they showing it going all the way into Louisiana, but not as far as we are. But they're just letting people know right now, they said, everybody know, we can't tell you where it's gonna be, it's too far off. But just start watching, uh, news, National Weather Service, Jay Grimes is our Homeland Security Director now for the weather. So we'll be getting alerts from them, and anybody that's on the weather channel that I put out, an alert for email, uh, if you're not on it, get with me, and I can add you. Uh, usually, I, nothing goes out unless we see we're getting, getting hit like a snowstorm. But other than that, we're still working on a few grants, uh, some of the stuff that's held up right now with the President. So we're still waiting to get final approval on some of that, other than that, that's it.
That's what you're gonna say, Jay Grimes, we want students up, be ready.
Mr. Dexter Armstead.
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain, and Mr. Michael Cheetham.
Yes.
Mr. Kyle Pleniken.
Yes.
Mr. Jason McCray.
Yes.
Mr. Keith Mills.
Yes.
Mr. Richard Oliver.
Yes.
Dr. Chrissy Oakland.
Yes.
President Lewis Kent.